All right, with that we will adjourn the Special Board of Education closed session and convene the regular Board of Education open session meeting at 7:06. Ms. Zucco, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Please rise.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the road call reflect that all members of the Cabinet and Board are present. In the closed session tonight, we reviewed a request for readmission of suspended students. We discussed the superintendent's evaluation and contract, and we discussed an agreement with the Duarte Successor Agency from the redevelopment and action that they're taking. We took no action in that meeting. All right. 2.5 is order of business. Is there any change to the order of business tonight?
There is not.
All right. 2.6 is approval of the minutes of the July 15th Board of Education meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Zucco?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to Board Member reports. Brandi, have a report. No reports? We're all on summer hiatus and...
Summer was too short. There's my report.
I hope everyone had a good summer. I understand the Unity Center distribution of school supplies went very well. Big event helped so many of our students, and we appreciate the Unity Center for putting that together and for all those that participate, Monrovia Reeds, and those health professionals that come out and all that make that a special event for our students. So thank you for that. Item 3.2, Dr. Therosian, your report.
In addition to the Foothill Unity Center event for back-to-school, we had a welcome breakfast to all our new employees. This year, just under 50 employees, certificated and classified, and again because of attrition primarily, were hired, and I want to commend the Human Resources Department despite the fact that they are understaffed at this point. There's still certainly somebody we need to hire in that position. They did a wonderful job in welcoming the newest members of the Monrovia Unified Family. Thank you for doing that. In addition, Mr. Buchanan, our Chief Technology Officer, has been busy looking at a new website, so please expect to see our new website coming up shortly. Hopefully something easier to navigate and definitely far more accurate.
Looking forward to that website. All right, moving on then to public comment for items not on the agenda. The Board of Education encourages public participation, invites you to share your views on school business. Please complete the addressing the Board of Education, turn it in to our secretary over here if you would like to address the Board. Do we have any?
I have received two requests to speak, Mr. President. The first from Susan Hirsch.
Good evening, Board President Gilliland, Board Members, Dr. Therosian, and members of the Cabinet. I'm here to greet you this evening as the newly appointed Community Services Commissioner for the City of Monrovia. And in this voluntary position, I am very happy to be able to act as liaison between Community Services and the city and the school district, and it is our greatest hope to be able to further support all of the wonderful alliances and partnerships that we already have and to expand those into some of the dreams that we've always had and some we don't even know about. So tonight I just want to give you a brief update on the things that we did over the summer to support our families during the time that summer school was still running and over the summer when there was no summer school. We had a series of several summer concerts in the Band Shell at Library Park. Those are still going and will conclude on September 6th. We also had summer family movies, a series of three movies in some of our parks, and those were really well attended. We had the Monrovia Police Department. Our National Night Out was an event at Library Park on Tuesday, August 4th, where over 300 residents shared a meal and conversation with our officers, our chaplains, our youth police explorers, and also our fire department explorers. Some of the programs that we share with the city include TAB, which is the Teen Advisory Board, and meets with Community Services, and they hosted five programs for students and youth in grades 6 through 12. Our Summer Youth Leadership Academy and Friday Night Teen Scene, which I'm happy to say is I'm an integral part of and teach the Leadership Academy. We have one more Friday night. We ran for seven weeks. We have actually this Friday night and the following Friday night concluding on August 21st. Yes, our Youth Employment Service. Today I was really thrilled to be able to attend the last meeting of our YES students when they presented their PowerPoints at the library. We had nine of our high school students. They worked in a variety of leadership positions around the city, including at City Hall, in Community Services, Public Works, working on our irrigation and water system at the YMCA, and several at Canyon Park with our park rangers, which was some of the most wonderful experiences for some of the kids that had never really experienced the wilds of our canyon. We also had Summer Extravaganza, which is eight weeks long for a program for children and youth, offering a variety of excursions and activities. In Pamela Park, to serve our unincorporated area, we had a variety of activities on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, with those concluding tomorrow evening, a Sparks Clinic, and Saturday evening, the End of Summer Blowout. And just briefly, a few of our upcoming events, and these are mostly in partnership with the district, so we have our MAP Youth Leadership Academy that will be beginning in September and running on the first Wednesday of every month from 2:30 to 4:30 from September through May. Those applications can be picked up at City Hall or Community Services or from any of us in the Community Services Department. In concert with that, we have the MAP Adult Leadership Academy, which is open to any adult in the Monrovia area. I encourage our families to attend that and learn all about how city government works and how you can get engaged in many of the programs. That runs for seven weeks on Thursday evenings beginning September 10th. We also have the Monrovia Youth Summit, which is a collaborative between the City of Monrovia and our school district. That will be happening on Saturday, October 17th, at Monrovia High School. And also our MAFSA Celebrate the Arts will be on September 26th and 27th at Library Park. And that concludes the myriad of activities that we have for our families, especially during the time that school is out so we can support our youth and our families. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Always good to hear what's going on in this community, such a great community, and congratulations on your appointment. Next speaker.
Next, we have Heather Burkhardt.
Ms. Burkhardt.
Good evening. And Sue, thank you for the activities. Our family took advantage of many of those. My name is Heather Burkhardt, and my son will be in first grade this year at Mayflower. We've been doing our first-grade workbooks all summer, trying to get him ready and doing all the reading projects, and we're looking forward to this new year with great teachers and energetic principal, reunion with friends, and making new friends. My concern for the safety of children at Mayflower Elementary School continues as the school year begins next week. It pains me to have had to speak with an attorney over the summer regarding my concerns, but I saw no other option since all other private efforts had seemed to fail. I've provided a document to each of you. Hopefully you've gotten it. It's called Actual Notice. The purpose of this notice is to document notifications, examples, and observations made, as well as reinforce the previously shared resources of what a safe school looks like and how Mayflower fails at just about every level of safety based on national standards. My hope is that the school district, Monrovia Unified, will take appropriate steps before something horrific happens to a child or staff member while on this campus of Mayflower. This actual notice will also serve as a legal document in the courts if an unfortunate event takes place, and it must be maintained in the district files and produced relative to any lawsuit involving these conditions and any public records request, according to the attorney. A group of parents and district personnel had one fencing subcommittee meeting before school ended in June. We left the meeting being told that we would meet through the summer to find ways of improving our children's safety through fencing. Our efforts to connect with district personnel via phone messages and emails have been neglected since our main meeting. There has been no communication regarding the status of safety improvements or plans, and the same concerns I shared at board meetings last year appear to remain this coming year. We have asked for a formal assessment of the school and recommendations by safety professionals based on speaking to our city manager and the captain at our police department last week at the National Cops Night Out. We were told that a walk-through of Mayflower took place during the summer, which included our police chief, captain, and Monrovia Unified School District representatives. We were told that recommendations were made by the Monrovia Police Department to the district was for one monitored access point, which would require full perimeter fencing and gating. These officials are currently under the impression that the district is going to install perimeter fencing. If this is the case, then I thank you, and I'm excited for that. I hope and I pray that that is the case. In the meantime, we've been driving past our school about once a week just to find out how it's going, how the new lawn looks, the status of the new playground equipment that we're hoping to see in September, and there's still temporary chain leak fence just around the field. And school is starting Wednesday of next week, and I feel like that's an issue. The perimeter fencing is the most highly recommended measure of limiting access to a school, and that's based on national safety officials and agencies as well as our own police department. I am concerned that the school year begins a week from today, and there is no sign of any movement regarding safety from what we can see without walking onto the property from the street. Mayflower has no one monitoring who goes on and off the campus with children's restrooms still fully accessible to anyone who walks by the school, and children walking the campus without adult supervision leaving Mayflower students vulnerable as they start school. The Academy of American Pediatrics states children under age 12 have an underdeveloped frontal lobe of the brain which is responsible for executive functions such as planning, working memory, and impulse control. It facilitates assessment of problematic situations and determination of the best course of action to take to resolve a problem. This is a child development issue that anyone working with children should know. This statement tells me that children under 12 must be supervised and not allowed to wander an open and fully accessible campus unattended. The day after my last visit to the district meeting, Mayflower practiced a lockdown drill. It was announced over the loudspeaker by the principal that the school was in lockdown and teachers were not to open the doors to anyone other than the principal, which I believe is the policy or practice. Two kindergarten students were visiting the public accessible restrooms unattended and locked out of their classrooms during this drill. The substitute teacher in their classroom didn't know what to do, and this is evidence observed by parents waiting for dismissal and their children saying what was happening in the classroom. The substitute teacher, while she was hearing the little kids, the kindergarten kids screaming, "Let them in, let them in," the substitute said, "I'm not supposed to open the door. The principal told me not to." So here are two little six-year-olds banging on the door to try to get in during a lockdown and screaming. That's a problem. It could have been a gunman, a pedophile, a mountain lion, a bear, anything. Even Mayflower neighbors have shared with the district their view that the school needs to be fenced appropriately. Parents' concerns have been taken to those who are responsible for the safety of our children while at school, our principal, district personnel, and Board of Education. The police chief, city manager, and mayor were contacted only because of the lack of response I and other parents have had over 14 years, hoping these community leaders could provide some guidance and expertise, and they have been quite helpful. Resources, news articles, and safety recommendations by professionals have been provided, numerous emails. You're probably tired of hearing from me, and I hope that today is the last you will hear from me because I want a closure on this, and this is my effort. My goal this year is to spend time with my son in his classroom, helping out the teachers, and being a good community member and school member. I love our school. I love our town. This is the one thing that drives me nuts. No, I'm not nuts. I'm frustrated. This is a huge problem. I see no movement over the summer. I have connected my neighbor, who's a grant writer at the university level, to district personnel with hopes that grants could be found toward safety at our school, and I know they've met at least once to try to find out if there are monies available for safety. I have exhausted myself trying to help in this effort. For a school district that states safety is its top priority, this inaction proves otherwise. The sole purpose of my endeavor and the endeavors of other parents has been to value the lives of our children and the adults that care for them so faithfully and devotedly during the school days, striving for a safe place for them to teach and for the children to learn. It appears that Monrovia Unified School District has taken a stance of taking action after something happens. For example, the resources for psychological needs of our students after a tragedy happened three years ago. I encourage a formal assessment of each school in the district and appropriate recommendations implemented before something happens, before something happens related to safety issues. Prevention is better than procrastination and recovery. Mayflower Elementary needs full perimeter fencing with one monitored access point per the Monrovia Police Department and multiple other professionals and experts. And I just hope that you'd consider this. Thank you very much, and thank you for being patient with my emails. I have made phone calls, and now people aren't able to talk to me, I guess, which is okay. I understand that. As you know, this is a very, very important issue to many people, myself, as you know, very much so, and I just want the school to be safe and our children to be safe, and I hope that you want the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhardt. Dr. Therosian has the chief of police statement to us was that Monrovia is a safe community, Mayflower is a safe school. Has he changed his position on that that we know of?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, did you have something?
Just one thing. And I always appreciate the Burkhardt zeal on what they're trying to accomplish. I don't agree with the path that you've taken to accomplish your goal, but that's for... reasonable people will come to a reasonable conclusion, and we don't have to agree, but we need to be respectful, and so far we've always been respectful. I do not share personally the concern that you have. I've listened to it on a number of occasions, but the reason the response level has now dropped off is because once somebody engages a lawyer, it removes the ability to have a dialogue. So now we're forced to have a dialogue on TV with microphones and a history of it, which is fine, okay? But I'd like the audience to know for sure that this is a situation and a situation that has not gone unlooked at. We have had multiple meetings on it, brought in our community professionals, and found the information that we needed to have. In fact, we have gone beyond that. So this isn't just something that we have neglected or ignored, or are we ignoring it today? I know it may not be the speed of which what you would like, and it may not even be the conclusion that you would like, but please know, the community, please know, that this body takes the safety of each and every one of our students very seriously. Not one student, but every student, and that's one thing as a takeaway, that we spend a considerable amount of time, a considerable amount of energy, and a considerable amount of money to make sure that our campuses are safe, and they are safe.
All right, are there any more comment cards?
Yes, our last speaker is Rodney Jefferson.
All right, Mr. Jefferson.
Good evening, Board. My name is Rodney Jefferson, and I am the outreach coordinator for your new state-of-the-art health facility called Chap Care in Monrovia. It's at 513 East Lime. Many of you were there for the red ribbon cutting ceremony, and I'd like to say thank you so much for attending the event. The reason for our speaking here at the Board meeting is to let you know that we are very excited about our new relationship with Monrovia Unified School Districts and the schools as a whole. So I'm just passing on a flyer for each one of the Board members. I'd like you to please come by and visit state-of-the-art facility here in Monrovia. We're working very vigorously with all of the different sports programs, your community organizations, Santa Anita YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and as you all know, since all the new laws have been passed, that health insurance is now required by law. So we're here targeting a lot of the families, you know, within the city and county areas of Monrovia, Duarte, and Arcadia to assist the families in those areas, too. So just wanted to say we're here and would like to encourage you guys to come by whenever. And I'm open to any questions. As you can see, the services that we provide are under women's health, pediatrics, otometry, and we do specialize in mental health counseling. We do do health insurance enrollment onsite, and that covers a lot of the people that may have existing health insurance or if it has shut down for any way, you know. We use Cover California, and we also do Medi-Cal and Medicare patients. So we have the whole gamut actually covered, and we have been working with a lot of the residents in Monrovia already, so we're very excited about how things are proceeding. And I'm open for any questions.
One question and a comment.
Yes.
First, I'm really happy you finally came to Monrovia. I've dealt with your organization in Pasadena, so I was very excited to see you coming here. And enrollment opens November 1st. Are you guys having any events planned to remind people that you have this window to enroll in doing any outreach in Monrovia for the residents?
Yes, we have several projects right now. One is going to be, of course, jointly with the Santa Anita YMCA. Karen, the director there, Karen McNair, has been very helpful, and the YMCA, I mean, the Boys and Girls Club. And now that school is going to be starting, we're going to be funneling a lot of information through your district to all of the different kids and residents, and plus me being basically from Monrovia, I guess you could say, I'm going to be your outreach consultant, so I'm going to be out there in the community. I've already started working with all of the different churches and religious organizations in the city, making sure that they have the information about some of the upcoming events that we're going to be doing within your school district and with a lot of your kids and instructors, so we're excited about that.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you.
And thank you for the flyer, and thank you for what you guys are doing there.
Thank you.
All right, any more comment cards?
No more comment cards.
All right, item 3.3.1, public comment for items on the open session agenda. Comments may be made at this point or at the time the item is considered and is placed on the agenda. Do we have any speakers?
I have received no request to speak, Mr. President.
All right, moving on to item 4.0, consent agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Move consent.
Second.
Before we take the vote, are there any items to be pulled? No. There are a lot of contracts on this consent agenda. They're recurrent contracts that we do from time to time, recurrent contracts, so at the start of the year, we tend to have a lot of them, and we've reviewed them closely. But they are plentiful on this consent agenda. Any more comments? Ms. Chu, please take the vote.
Board Member Zucco?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Moving on to 7.10, contract for consultant services with AMEC Foster Wheeler Environmental Infrastructure. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Wu.
Yes, good evening, Board. And the State Water Board adopted a new California industrial activities stormwater general permission last April. It is required to be taken effective July 1st, 2015, this school year, and because the district operated on transportation and were subject to this new permit. The permit basically required the district to submit the stormwater pollution prevention plan and a monitor program electronically uploaded to the state website, and the deadline to file the plan and monitoring program is this Friday. So we have already contracted an expert because this is the deadline, and we require the Board to verify this contract in order to comply with the state rule.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
If the plan is for the State Water Resource Board, why are we giving the money to LACO?
Okay, this is different because the district is one of the 16 LACO school districts in the consortium, and the contract with LACO, with the leading agency, with 16 school districts, is the annual contract with this company, which is the same company which we entered for this agreement. The LACO contract basically is a training update, the information is routine. Create a new plan and a monitor program is additional beyond the scope of work for the LACO contract.
Are we one of the lucky 16 because of our geographic location, or is there some other?
No, actually, it is required all the public agency. As far as the school district, you have a transportation yard and hosting the bus is a part of subject to this new permit.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Chen, please take the vote.
Board Member Zucco?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. We will move on to item 8.3, collective bargaining agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, indeed. Good evening. The Board of Education has requested to approve the addition of two professional development days to employees' working calendars and a corresponding increase to annual employee compensation of approximately 1.09% for the Monrovia Teachers Association, California School Employees School Employees Association, the Monrovia Association of School Administrators, and confidential and classified management effective July 1, 2015, as supported by AB 1200. As you recall, on April 29, 2015, the Board of Education approved the 2015-2016 school calendar that added two additional professional development days for MTA employees as well as all other groups, bargaining groups here in the Monrovia Unified School District. The total budget implication was an additional $426,867 per year, which will be paid by supplemental and concentration grant funding, unrestricted general funds, and other funds of the district. This increase was included in the 2015-2016 adopted budget approved by the Board of Education on June 24, 2015.
Are there any comments or questions? All right, Ms. Chen, please take the vote.
Board Member Zucco?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item 9.1, consider readmit case number 1213-01. Could I have a motion, please?
Yes, just a minute. Sorry, I had to get the microphone. I move that the Board of Education deny readmission of expulsion case number 1213-01, student 111106698, a student expelled by the Monrovia Unified School District in violation of ED Code 48900K based on the conclusion of the Board that the student has not satisfactorily completed the plan for rehabilitation and/or the pupil continues to pose danger to campus staffy or other pupils or employees of the school district and in accordance with ED Code Section 48916.
Second.
Are there, is there any discussion? Ms. Chen, please take the vote.
Board Member Zucco?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item 9.2, Board Policy 5111, admission accompanying administrative regulation. Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, this is a reading of the Board Policy 5111, and it deals with admission. This board policy reflects a new law, AB 2706, that was in 2014, which requires district enrollment forms to include information about affordable health care options and available enrollment assistance. The policy also adds language to ensure that enrollment of homeless students, foster youth, or family of military and military family are not delayed for lack of records, and it reflects a new law, AB 2276, which prohibits districts from denying enrollment to children from juvenile court schools for the sole reason of their contact with the juvenile court system. The regulations have been updated to delete outdated dates regarding age eligibility for TK kindergarten or first grade.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have one comment. How much is it going to be, any sort of noticeable cost for us to add the Cover California to our admission package?
No, it's simply a sheet of paper that goes in that explains the affordable care cost for families.
So it's 6,000 pieces of paper?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the Cover California people have an outreach budget of bazillions of dollars, and we have to pay for all of the?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
How many?
The bazillion dollars.
Bazillion, no, that's -- we should talk them into sharing.
That's not an accurate figure. It is possibly less than a bazillion, but it's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a bazillion, not Brazilian.
All right, are there any more questions or comments? Is everyone okay if we bring this back on consent next time, since this was first reading? All right, hearing no objection, let's put that on consent next time. Item 9.3, Board Policy 6170.1, Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, indeed. Board Policy 6170.1 deals with transitional kindergarten, and the board policy is revised and it's updated to reflect the new law, SB 876, which establishes certain qualifications for teachers assigned to the TK program after July 1, 2015, and the new law, SB 858, which states legislative intent that TK curriculum be aligned to California Preschool Learning Foundation. The policy also deletes outdated dates related to student eligibility for the program, adds immunization requirements, and adds requirement to attain a signed kindergarten continuance form when a child who is age eligible for kindergarten is enrolled in TK and then continues into kindergarten the following year. There is a gap in terms of a child is able to now enroll in the TK program who historically has not been age eligible, and if there's a gap between the eligible age and the time when that child turns five, it is at the district cost. There is no ADA during those days before the child turns five.
Did 858 or 876 provide any funding?
No.
I thought I did.
That's shocking. No funding.
You're such a comedian.
I know. My mother said never to ask a question you didn't know the answer to, and I did know the answer to that question.
Are there any more questions or comments?
More of a comment, just for clarity for the folks that are watching at home in the audience, the governor of the state of California has declared that children who heretofore were not age eligible to attend school are now eligible, but not at the state cost for reimbursement, but we, the citizens of the Monrovia Unified School District, are now required to pay for their education out of our general fund without any reimbursement. Thank you, Jerry Brown.
And thus, the holding up with one hand, oh, we've increased the education budget, and the backdoor.
That's to free up your pockets so they can reach in and get your wallet easier.
Right. Yes. Any other questions or comments or complaints? All right, hearing done, let's bring that back on consent next time, too.
Yes, sir.
Item 9.4, pending board issues. We've reviewed that. Did anyone have any questions, additions, changes? All right, still have quite a list of pending issues and things we're working on. Item 10.1, next regular board meeting is August 26 at 7:00. Then we're followed by September 9 and 23 for board meetings. Dates to calendar include a special joint Board of Education and City Council meeting next Monday, the 17th, at 5:00 p.m. in this room. And Wednesday, the 19th, is the first day of the 2015-2016 school year, and our students will be back in session, and the traffic around the schools will increase dramatically in the mornings and evenings, so I'll be on the watch for that.
Mr. Gilliland?
Yes.
I have one thing. When I looked at the personnel report, I just wanted to say that one of my favorite substitute teachers is leaving the state of California, the Card family.
They are, they're moving to Utah.
So they moved to Utah today, and Bonnie Card was one of the best substitute teachers, and her father-in-law served on this board, and so I wanted to say goodbye to the Card family.
Right.
Sorry, I wanted to interrupt that, but I didn't see a point in the agenda to say that.
That's okay. Back-to-school events are listed in the agenda. If you're interested, every school will have a back-to-school event starting on August 31 and wrapping up with Monrovia High on September 16, so hope to see everyone out there for these back-to-school nights. Any other new business? I have one item that I would like to have us consider at some point in the future. Now, I was privileged, I'm getting a little bit emotional, which I'm sorry, but I had a privilege to work with the Special Olympics World Games, and one of our volunteers took her nine-year-old niece to one of the venues, and when they were done, she said, "Have you learned anything from the Special Olympics here today?" And then he said, "Well, you know, you can't really, I learned that you can't really judge people by what they look because they may be better than you." And that's so true. And I just, I think back to last year when we had the special needs student that had such fine artwork standing there. And I would like for us to look not only how we at a district can work with the Special Olympics, which focuses on sports, but how can we key in on those special needs arts? And to see if we don't have some ways to help those special needs folks that have so many abilities. They may be physically or developmentally challenged, but I got to tell you, you can't judge them by the way they look, because even if they're in a wheelchair, they might get down on both hands and outrun you on the track, which some of the guys at the World Games did, and it was amazing, and we've got some amazing kids in this district that are just excellent with artwork, and so maybe if there's some way we can tie a lot of that together would be good. Will say it. All right. Enough of my emotional.
You know, at the '84 Olympics, they did have the Arts Festival, the Olympic Arts Festival, and that was great.
And at the World Games, at the Special Olympics World Games, they had nothing to do with the arts, and I just think there's something missing there that we might be able to help precipitate. At least if we started in Monrovia, we'll have it in Monrovia, if nowhere else. All right, item 12.0, adjourn the regular Board of Education open session meeting at 7:48, and we want to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Deborah Blum, who passed away recently. Deborah served as library technician at Plymouth Elementary School for over 20 years and just retired in 2012, so we, along with the family, will honor her. All right, with that, we're adjourned in the regular meeting, and we're going to convene the special board session in just a few minutes.